Welcome, everybody. I have 7:00 PM by my watch, so we'll get started. I'll call the meeting in order. I think it's my turn. I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. The first set of minutes we have is from our Board of Selectmen Special Meeting on April 22nd.
Move that we approve the minutes, the special meeting of April 22nd.
Second.
All right. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Fred? Good?
All seven.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I abstain.
You're going to abstain? Begging abstains. All right. The next set of minutes is from our public hearing on April 22nd regarding the sewer rates.
Move that we approve the minutes to the public hearing of April 22nd.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention. And the last one is from our sewer meetings, special minutes from the same day, April 22nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second to motion.
Any questions, concerns, comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? One more abstention.
I abstain. Although I did listen to the meeting, so maybe I don't have to abstain.
I was told for whatever it's worth, a while back, you don't have to abstain if you weren't present. You could vote on the minutes.
That's correct. Robert's Rules of Order allows even those that weren't there to vote on the meeting because you're simply reading it and verifying. But that's what was said, so.
But I respect your abstention as well. Certainly your choice.
I appreciate it, dear.
All right. I don't think we have any recommendation for the Conservation Commission, so we'll move on to business. Don't see Mr. Logan in the room. So we'll skip that. And we will go on to presentation from Aunt McGovern, who's our Park and Rec Board Chairman. Welcome, Aunt.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Glad to be here. For those that haven't had the pleasure to meet directly, I'm Anthony McGovern. I've been the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Board for the past nine months or so. Appreciate the opportunity to come and share just a few updates and really just kind of area of focus for the board for the remainder of this calendar year. We really kind of tried to reform our purpose about nine months ago, to be more purposeful, be more helpful to the department, and frankly, take the opportunity to be consistent with the charge of the ordinance that forms the Parks and Recreation Board by getting in front of all of you on a periodic basis to provide updates. Lots goes on at the Parks and Recreation Department on a regular basis. Proud to be able to observe that the team there does a pretty exceptional job. High praise from a lot of customers of the Parks and Recreation Area. Department of Public Works does an incredible job of maintaining all of the facilities. I say that not only in my position as chairperson, but, you know, as a regular consumer, of a parent of youth in active sports and somebody who's frequently on fields, you know, across the town, being highly engaged. So just a really great department. Proud to be able to work alongside with them and really look to work along with our board to bring information to all of you of really how do we continue to bring things into the future? And if you pay attention to the next slide, if you don't mind. Just a couple grounding points. So the purpose, this is just a very exceptional distillation of what the ordinance says. It's our job to work alongside the department, bring information back to all of you. Frankly, I think it's a role of advocacy, one of making recommendations and try to be thoughtful and prudent of town resources in terms of what we may want to consider investing into, features, updates, so on and so forth. We did highlight about a year ago, consistent with the strategic planning effort, you know, that all of you were spearheading, what are our goals, again, consistent with the charter, really highlighting, you know, what is our focus around resources of the town, the assets that are there in terms of facilities, whether that's buildings or parks? And then second to that, but equally important, you know, what are the resources and services that the department staff is bringing forward on a regular basis to support, you know, all the members of the community and beyond? Just a highlight of who's who and on the board. Great group of people to work alongside with, and again, looking forward to engaging with all of you as we move ahead. If you don't mind moving to the next slide. So 2024 focus. We had planned to be in front of all of you about four months ago, and we were loaded with all of the firepower in the world to advocate for some of the capital expense or capital needs of the Parks and Recreation Department. Thankfully, all of you got that message loud and clear, and the key priorities, you know, were accounted for and considered. You know, as part of the budget ahead. We know that there's going to be some longer term needs around the playground facility, the basketball courts. I think there's a prudent plan in place in terms of looking to sustain the life of those assets for a couple more years at least, and really look forward to figure out the long-term solutions as we look ahead. Okay? So we'll spare you all the evidence and the picture reels of, you know, the dilapidated resources that are there. The real work looking ahead is around policy establishment. We know that there has never been a policy put in place around the Recreation Fund, and that's really kind of led to a number of things that just have been opportunities across the department for very many years, looking to self-sustain to cover payroll costs and related benefit costs, not necessarily focused fully on what is the caliber of services, you know, to be provided? And then what do you do with that Recreation Fund once it accumulates a balance? What do we do? So looking forward to really establishing a smart policy that makes good sense, provides clarity and direction to the department, how do they need to go about executing, you know, on a regular basis? And then interrelated to that, you know, is pricing policy. Common issue is, you know, how do we deal with fee for service for different organizations across town? Again, how do we be deliberate and purposeful around the expense or, excuse me, the, uh, the policy around, you know, fee setting, who gets access to facilities, what price points, resident, non-resident, so on and so forth? So a lot of good work underway right now. We look forward to being back in front of all of you within the next 60 days or so with some thoughtful recommendations to move that forward. Last but not least, consistent with the establishment of rec fund policy, how do we also then inform and be thinking about short-term and long-term capital needs of Parks and Rec? How do we use that as a platform for regular updates to all of you? How do we really provide those key inputs, you know, for the longer-term planning of the town? Questions, comments?
We'll start with Fred from Zoom. Fred, you got anything?
Nothing. Thank you for being here and giving us an overview.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for getting the, working on the policies. I know that's something that we've talked about frequently. So excited to see that those are moving forward.
Great.
Yeah, I had the same thing. Thank you, Aunt, for, you, and please pass it on to the entire board.
Absolutely.
That's something that we're grateful that that work is being done. I'm sure Mr. Walsh will be grateful as well to work with you guys and have something that we can consider. So, thank you.
Just a shout out. My children were users as an outside town of Salmon Brook Park. It's an impressive facility. I think the residents know that. Your stewardship, the board stewardship is certainly appreciated. I look forward to, you know, helping out on the basketball courts, helping out on the play scape, and been around a lot of towns over a lot of years. Very few have the Parks and Recreation Department funded predominantly by user fees. So to me, that's a testament to, you know, the policies and procedures that have been put in place, and I think it's great for the community.
Appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. Let me just add that I'm not sure that everyone appreciates how much time the board members spend at various activities. They don't just go to a meeting once or twice a month. They are always at these events and staffing them and passing out hot dogs and things like that, and we appreciate all of the effort. I do hope that when you are looking at your fee policy, that there will be a provision for people in the community that can't necessarily afford to pay the full fee, that there'll be some consideration to making sure no one gets shut out because of inability to pay.
Yeah. Great feedback. I think we're intending to be very purposeful. You know, I think, you know, part of our broad goals, you know, really about enabling access, right? Which I think fundamentally kind of shapes, you know, what is that point of view? It's not just who can get access, but how are we making that more accessible to, you know, our community?
Right. Thank you.
Actually, following on that, the walking trail, I think will be a great addition. I think that part of that's under our capital budget, because I don't think the steep grant covered it all.
I'll take that when you're finished with the comments.
Yeah, I am.
Okay. So the numbers are approximately 466,000 for the steep grant, about 113 town match. That'll come out of the Parks and Recreation Fund. I've actually received comments from a couple of residents on this because in my activity report, I comment that, you know, through Kirk, the costs have come in higher than, in fact, the grant. So the feedback was, you know, under no circumstances would we spend more money than that. And I assure the resident that both Abby, Kirk, myself, Sandy are all going back to the drawing board in reevaluating or what they call value engineering. We expect to only spend what was contemplated in the grant and so forth. We are also looking, the other feedback and commentary I got from the residents were, they questioned whether or not we needed an outside construction inspection firm to do this because this wasn't real, this wasn't complicated, and they thought that Kirk or perhaps our building inspector could do it. But in each case, the grant required certain reporting requirements, and to properly do this, from core samples to having experience with the steep grant, those were skill sets that simply we should not expect our Public Works Director to have, nor our building official. Our building official is a licensed state official for construction projects, the building code, and we're not really talking about building code when we're laying the path. So I anticipate we'll have a signed contract probably within a month. Our goal is to have this work specked out and started. We're resolving a few items with wetlands as to whether it makes sense for the contractor to do it or whether it makes sense for Public Works to do it. But at the end of the day, I believe we will have this done and buttoned up with your assistance probably by fall or even mid-September as a harder date. So it's going well. No one should panic. We haven't blown the budget. We're value engineering, and it'll be good. We should have it done this year.
Good. Looking forward to working with you and the rest of the team to make sure that we get it done and get it done right. Perfect.
Anything else more?
Nothing else.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for having us. If it's okay, we'd love to get back in front of all of you in the next 60 days or so.
Yeah.
And actually get into the meat of the policies that we drafted. Mr. Walsh, if you don't mind, we'll probably get some time with you and Sandy ahead of time.
Please, Mike. Mike.
You can call me Aunt.
Well, when we see it on the agenda, that'll be our signal that Sandy and Mike and you have all worked through it. And it's ready for us to consider, so thank you.
Very good.
Yep.
Good. I appreciate being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Logan's here, so I think we'll go back and we'll, you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Logan passes out the materials. It's a PowerPoint. It was Mark who requested some questions or asked me some questions regarding Aquarian Water. I got in touch with George. We had a meeting earlier. The first selectman, Mark, said, hey, listen, let's have the presentation. And a lot of, a lot of what we have previously discussed will be covered today, but in more detail. And I want to reserve some thoughts. Chief Orr is on Teams. I want to reserve some thoughts for the end on fire hydrants. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Super. Thank you. So again, George Logan. I am the Director of Community Relations for Aquarian Water Company. I started with Aquarian back in 1992 as a junior engineer and way up to being a senior engineer and Director of Engineering there for several years, and then I went the executive route. I'm here today really just to give you an update on the water system. At least in my time, these last few years in this role, I don't think we've come up here and spoken to you all before. So I want to give you a little bit of background on Aquarian. I'm always willing to come back as well if you want more detail on a specific area. I just need about 10 minutes. So if we go to page three, and the reason I handed this out and I haven't submitted electronically, because there's, for this first presentation, there's some sensitive information on there. For example, the water distribution system map. That's included in this presentation, who's the water main, who's where the valves are, whose locations of the hydrants. And since 9/11 and Homeland Security, we're very careful on letting that information out to the public. Usually folks have to sign nondisclosure agreements, confidentiality agreements, to get this information. But I think it's important that we go through it and you can see what we are, what we have, especially we get into discussion regarding hydrants. So on page three, Aquarian Water Company, the largest investor-owned water utility in New England, based out of Bridgeport, Connecticut. We serve most of Fairfield County except for one town. But we're also in about 59 or so towns throughout Connecticut. Aquarian was started in 1857, so it's been around for a while. And we experienced steady growth throughout the 20th century. We expanded into Massachusetts and New Hampshire in 2002. In those 59 or so towns, we integrated over 84 water systems into our operations. In December of 2017, Aquarian Water Company was purchased by Evrosource Energy, a wholly owned subsidiary of Evrosource since 2017. On page four, all those cities, it talks about the 86 systems and 72 cities, but that's throughout all of New England. I think it's 59 or so in Connecticut. And where I wanted to focus on, if you look at Aquarian Water Company, Connecticut, in total, we have 200, approximately 217,000 connections. The rate base, right, that's taking all of the assets, all the pipes and the grounds and the valves and the buildings and the tanks and the pump stations, about $1 billion in rate base. So of that $1 billion that we're charged, we're taking care of every year. We collect approximately $200 million in revenues to take care of that $1 billion in rate base. And you can see we're in 59 cities and towns in Connecticut. And page five, just a bit of an asset, give you a bit of a occasion. In total, 59 towns, Aquarian is responsible for maintaining 249 wells, 27 reservoirs, 10 reservoir systems. We don't have any of those here, but those are, you can have reservoirs that are linked chain together. 36 dams, treatment facilities, 10 surface water facilities, 70 groundwater treatment facilities, distribution over 3,000, almost 3,500 miles of water mains, 176 water storage tanks, and I believe three of those provide, help ride water to the Granby system. We'll get into that in a little bit. And 98 pumping stations. Just to give you an idea of the water company, I'd be remiss to say that, you know, Aquarian, we focus on customer service and customer satisfaction. Back in 2004, PURA, that's our regulator, they were recording about 66 complaints per year. From 2004 and prior to that, the number was high, and we felt that that was just not acceptable. So we put on our hats and we worked hard on that, and you can see we brought down those PURA complaints from our regulators down to five. So that means when those complaints come in initially, PURA initially lets us know about them, and then we try to resolve them before they become problematic. Environmental champions. Aquarian considers itself stewards of the environment. Water quality compliance of our legacy systems. In 2023, our goal was zero violations, and results were zero violations. Our goal was to have 100% environmental compliance in 2023, we reached that goal. We're attempting to become carbon neutral by 2030, and we have a comprehensive conservation program that we use to manage supplies and to help to encourage conservation-type behaviors from our customers. We at Aquarian have a motivated workforce, and if anyone here knows anyone from working at Aquarian, everyone takes their jobs very seriously and are committed to their job and task at hand. We've been rated among the top tier of the top workplaces for the last decade or so. On page nine, some of the challenges facing the water industry. Aging infrastructure, whether it's the pipes, the valves, pump station tanks. Water quality issues, emergence contaminants, PFAS. As many of you probably already know, it's a group of man-made chemicals. These are not chemicals that Aquarian has, you know, created or by our own means. But we do in many areas have to deal with PFAS in our water, and we measure that throughout all of our systems. And the new EPA standards were just made official, and water systems have about five years to comply to it. And, you know, we were measuring our PFAS levels before we were even required to do so. And we are fully confident that we will be within the maximum contamination level for PFAS within those five years. Lead and copper rule. Increased sampling, so these are the lead, particularly the service lines, right? You have the main in the street, and then you have the service line that goes from the water main to the property line. That's called the service connection. And then the service line from the property line to the home, that is technically the responsibility of the homeowner. But you can imagine if that's a lead line, even if Aquarian replaces that service connection which is lead, if the portion between the property line and the home is still lead, that's a problem. Not to mention when you disturb or crack open or split lead service line, it can cause more harm than good. So we have been working with the state to identify where all the lead service lines are and coming up with the solutions for that. Streamflow regulations, again, not particularly in Granby or any part of our Simsbury system. There's many groundwater supplies there, but that has reduced our available capacity overall. We're looking to put more water into the environment from our spillways and our reservoirs. Aging workforce. Some of you may consider me somewhat young-looking, but I am 55. And, you know, a lot of my colleagues are, particularly in the last five years or so, have retired. And we've been working hard to bring in, you know, new, younger folks into the fold there. We have internship programs that we've utilized, summer internship programs as well. Rising customer expectation. High level of reliability. Customers are not, not as willing to deal with any outage, for example, of water for any reason. So we're working hard to make sure that we have maximum reliability of our water system. And irrigation systems, installations seem to be a problem, increasing problem. More and more people throughout Connecticut are installing irrigation systems, and that's taxing our water supply. Page 10, we'll get too long on that, but what Aquarian brings to the table. I talked about the professional organization and, you know, folks that understand the responsibility that we have. We're, we're the only utility that's providing a product that people actually can ingest, and we take that very seriously. We understand the seriousness of that. We care about our customers, we want to be responsible to the environment, and we also support a knowledgeable and diverse workforce. We're a highly skilled, willing organization. Been around for 100, over 165 years. Customer benefits, great service, high-quality drinking water. We're industry-leading in terms of customer service and our ability to manage rates and work with our regulators. We have a deep technical bench. We have over 340 employees throughout the organization. And I mentioned the environmental compliance record and there's zero health-based water quality violations in that we've been growing. On page 11. So this is based on our 2022 end-of-year PURA report. I couldn't get the numbers for the end of '23, but this is, it's pretty close. And Granby, this is also sensitive information. Approximately 1,400 people served, 523 service connections, at least to the end of 2022. It may have been a few since then, but that'll put you in the ballpark. 522 service connections. The Granby system is part of what we call the Simsbury, Greater Simsbury Distribution System. And you can see what the numbers look like in terms of Simsbury and East Granby. So all of the water supplies and the distribution system is shared by all the folks you see on this page. Page 12. Can't fight a fire if there's no water in the tank. So conservation has been an important aspect of Aquarian for a few decades now. There were a big drought in the mid-1960s, and we had another one in 2016. So we wanted to work with our regulators because prior to the decoupling of rates, the more water we sold, the more revenues we brought in, and theoretically, the more profit the water company would make. So when we were pushing conservation efforts, that kind of goes opposite the grain of that, right? We're trying to save water. So what we've done, working with our regulators again, we decoupled rates so that PURA decides how much we're allowed to earn in terms of, in terms of revenue for a particular year. And if for, if any particular year, let's say that it's a dry summer, and we sell more water, it's a dry summer, well, we are allowed a certain amount of revenues. We have to give back anything more than that back to the customers in terms of their bills. And conversely, that works as well, that if it's a very wet summer and we earn less than what we were allowed in terms of revenues, we can add that as a surcharge. And I must say, it's worked more, at least in the last several years, more of a give-back than adding a surcharge because of dry weather. Streamflow regulations, I talked about a little bit. Capital investment. I talked about that $1 billion of rate base and that we have approximately $200 million to maintain. And that $200 billion includes everything, includes new capital, includes salaries, wages, the buildings, utilities that Aquarian pays. Climate change is a big factor. It's changed weather patterns tremendously throughout all of our region, and so we've been adjusting for that. And I mentioned the drought of 2016, which really, really causes us to really gear up and supercharge our conservation efforts, which applies to everyone throughout the, all of our customers throughout the state. We did a consumption analysis, and what we found was that demand is going slowly but steadily down. Now, when I say demand, that is domestic demand. And that makes sense because we are pushing water conservation, and more and more people are being aware of the value of water and how important it is to conserve. However, the man is going up between April and October. So through November and March of any given year, folks aren't irrigating that much, right? But when you look at April through October, we have a number of communities that are, have dramatic peaking. The peaking isn't as dramatic here, but there is peaking during the summer months. Aquarian's customer base is 90%, 90-plus percent residential. And that demand going up, we attribute it to irrigation systems. More and more people adding irrigation systems to their properties. So we have a minority of customers who are using excessive amounts of water in the summer months. We do our best to identify those customers and make them aware of what they're doing in terms of, you know, perhaps more of their fair share of the water supply. So smarter water begins with you. We encourage everyone to water their lawns, mow their lawn, water their lawns twice a week. We actually feel that your lawns will be strengthened if you do that, as opposed to watering them every day where the roots don't have to work so hard to get to the water. You'll have deeper roots, your grass will be stronger, and will help with water conservation. The next page talks about the Granby, is an illustration of the Granby portion of the Simsbury Water Distribution. Simsbury water distribution system. And you can see Simsbury at the, at the bottom end, south of the line there, and I tried to put the town line in there. And what you see in the blue is 12-inch mains and the green are 8-inch mains. And as you can see, we serve a small portion of Granby, small but mighty and vocal portion of Granby. And as you can see on this map, we indicate the valves on this map, again, sensitive information, and the location of the hydrants. I wanted to add the hydrants out here just for what I suspect to be our conversation later today. On the next page, talking a little bit about our infrastructure maintenance and improvements. Right now, we are flushing in the system last week and this week in Granby. So our folks are out there flushing the water mains. And the purpose of that is to help keep the water mains clean over time. Naturally occurring minerals collect in the pipe and a good way to get them out of there is by flushing them. It helps with water quality. So we're doing that, happened to be doing it last week, we should be finishing up by the end of this week. And then we have a couple of pump stations that we are upgrading, major upgrades, but that affects Granby and it goes to that reliability portion in terms of we are adding a generator or one of these pump stations, we're replacing the pumps and the motors, putting variable frequency drives and improving the control systems as well. And all that will help again with the reliability of the water system. And last page, never know the worth of water until the well runs dry. And I will leave it at that and I'll take questions from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Logan. Let's start with Brad. You want to go first again?
Sure. Regarding the lead connecting pipes, is there any, you have any insight on how many there might be in our region and what the timeframe window would be to notify the owners?
Sure. I don't have the, that number with me now, but I certainly can get back to you on that. Right now, we are at the stage of trying to identify where all of those lead service lines are. And once we do that, then we have to determine what the cost is going to be to replace all of those lead service lines. And then working with our regulators in terms of what's a reasonable amount to do that. Because remember, right, how our rates work is that, you know, whether we're doing work in Sims, in Simsbury or Granby or, or Litchfield, we all pay the rates, right? And we share in terms of the cost for upgrading the system. So once we get a better handle, and that's one, you'd think it'd be an easy task, but it's not. Many of these homes were built before records were kept in terms of what the materials are that were used for the service line connections. We had location, tap cards, location maps, but many times they did not indicate what the material was. So we're in the process of doing that now. But I can give you an update in terms of where we are in that aspect of the, of the program.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Question on the general condition of the lines in Granby. Are they, you know, besides the lead pipe piece of it, are they going to need to be upgraded at any point soon? I know there's been a lot more, you know, development in town, not so much downward where you guys serve, but as that continues to increase, does the width of the pipe or diameter of the pipe have to be expanded?
Sure. So when you look at the, the map that I provided, look at the piece, what was?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And you look at the water distribution system, you're in very good shape in terms of, you look at the main line going through town there, that blue line, that's a 12-inch water main. And that's a very decent sized water main that would last for even further expansion should the town want to do that. We, we don't encourage or discourage expansion of the distribution system. And then you look at the green lines, those are all 8-inch water mains. We have other communities where, let's say older communities where the water distribution system is a bit older than Granby's. For example, lower southwestern Fairfield County, Greenwich and Danbury. You see a little red line there? That's a 6-inch water main. Typically, we don't even allow a fire hydrant on a 6-inch water main. We have other communities where those red lines are peppered all throughout the distribution system. So from that standpoint, it certainly goes to show that, you know, these pipes are at the very least, you know, less than 40 years, you know, 40 years old. And the fact that it's designed well and has been implemented well, so you're in very good shape as far as that goes. I asked my engineering department if we had any water main replacements scheduled for this year or next year in Granby and the answer is no. Now, however, if there ever is an issue where, let's say there's a, a history of, say, water main breaks on a particular section of pipe, it could be because of age, could be because of the soil conditions in that area, we would look at that and we would reprioritize that. But right now, Granby is in pretty good shape from our vantage point in terms of the actual pipes in the ground and the valves they have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, you answered most of my questions, George, based on Kelly's questions. I don't, I'm not sure what Chief Orr is going to ask you, but, and I'm not sure it's, my question is appropriate for a public discussion, but I want to get it out on the table.
Sure, sure.
Which is relation specifically to the hydrants.
Yes.
Because that, that cost to us is new as I know you've helped us kind of transition through that.
Absolutely.
It's, I think from our standpoint, from my standpoint, I just want to make sure we have a complete list of which hydrants, because we have other hydrants that you're not maintaining.
That's correct.
So we want to make sure we know exactly which ones you're maintaining, what schedule you're on and stuff like that and that all of that information is appropriately flowing to our first responders. So you don't have to answer that question, I just want to make sure that offline somewhere between Mr. Walsh and our fire chief that you guys work through that information.
Absolutely can do that. And if you look at the, the map, there's approximately 30 or so hydrants that we do maintain. But you're right, there are plenty of other hydrants in town that Aquarian does not provide water for. The question of who's actually maintaining even these hydrants, we should chat about as well. Because currently, we're not charging the town for maintaining the hydrants. We're currently charging the town for the service, fire service that we're providing, so the water that we're providing, so we should chat about that a little bit more to make sure we're on the same, on the same page in terms of who's maintaining these particular hydrants.
Again, I'm not sure what Chief Orr was going to ask you, but that's, for me, that's the main concern and I'm not, I'm encouraging us not to have that discussion here until you guys get offline and figure out what we're talking about. Go ahead, thank you, you're next.
No, I, I wanted to reemphasize that you and I talked about the $15,000 bill.
Yes.
If you can give the board some context as to what regulatory authority allows Aquarian to charge Granby $15,000. And again, not a topic for tonight, but reiterate for the board that that is not for maintenance of the fire hydrants, that is for maintenance of the water system that brings the water to the fire hydrant. So if you can talk a little bit about Pura, talk a little bit about the 15 and why it hasn't been collected in the past, that'll help us.
Sure, sure. The Pura Public Utility Regulatory Authority, they're the ones that help us direct exactly what we can charge for rates. In terms of fire protection, they have a formula that they have created that all utilities under their purview have to abide by. And the formula includes what's called an inch foot factor. So the best way I could try to describe what an inch foot factor is, because anyone who's like me, an engineer, has never heard of an inch foot factor, but these regulators come up with these terms. I'll give an example. Let's say you have a hundred feet of that 8-inch main that I'm showing, 100 feet, and the diameter of that pipe is eight inches. So the inch foot for that section of 100 feet would be 800, eight times the 100 and that would give you the number for inch foot. So we do that for all of the different sized pipes that we have in the system. And that's how we come up with the, the inch foot for that particular system. And then Pura, they're the ones who set what the factor is that we can charge for that inch foot, times their factor, that comes up with the, the amount. And what is that for? That is for the fact that we're providing fire protection for the areas that we serve. So if we weren't providing fire protections, the water tanks would be a lot smaller. If we weren't providing fire protection, the water mains would be a lot smaller, many of them would be 6-inch or 4-inch. So that factor is supposed to take into account the fact that Aquarian upsized its distribution system to be able to provide adequate fire protection in those areas. So that's, that's simple of it, if that makes sense. If it doesn't, let me know. But I thought it long and hard, I was driving up there, I thought that would be a good way to describe it.
Can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
Does the Pura rule, sorry, are we paying a different factor than other communities or is it one factor for every community?
Yeah, there, the factor's different for different communities.
Because we might have different infrastructure.
Yes, and, and it has to do of when the, the utility at that time went to Pura in terms of, you know, requesting that factor. Because what comes into play at the, at the time that factor's created is, you know, the size of the, of the community, how many tanks do you have, how many pump stations you have and somehow that affects the formula. But your rate is similar to East Granby and to, is exactly the same as Simsbury and East Granby, but it's not the same as the Bridgeport system, it's not the same as the Grand system per se. They all should be the, the same. I think over time, they will be, but again, small utility versus big. And again, they came up with the, with the actual factor based on the number of factor, based on the number of criteria that they have determined.
So what, it does me with one more question and I warn you that I'm really bad with math, so this is going to sound stupid. So if, if our costs are based on an inch foot factor, would it matter if we added 20 more hydrants?
Sense. Well, see, well, that, and that's where the discussion we're going to have to have because there's actually two components of that fire service charge. One component is what you've been built for, and that's for the upsizing of the system, the maintenance of the system, that sort of thing. But there's another charge for each fire hydrant that we, Aquarian, is maintaining. We're not charging Granby for those at all because my previous discussions, I got the impression that the town was maintaining all of the fire hydrants. So we'll have to, you know, discuss that and just try to make sure that we're on the same page. The cost for maintaining the physical hydrant, that means if it needs to be replaced, Aquarian will replace it. If it needs to be maintained or fixed, Aquarian will fix it. If it needs to be painted, Aquarian would, would paint it. That is approximately, approximately $265 per fire hydrant. And, you know, Aquarian had the ability to, to charge this fee for both the, you know, hydrants and for the fire service, if you will, for at least 10 years now and they haven't, haven't done it. And we have realized that fact just a couple of years ago and we double checked and triple checked to make sure. And, you know, we made the conscious decision not to even attempt to backcharge at all. And I, I personally came and, and met with folks here to try to make sure that we were on the same page in terms of the fire hydrants as well. So I would, I, I'm looking forward to meeting with Chief Orr and, and talking to him and also make sure that we don't have both forces maintaining the same hydrants as well.
Again, sir, because I am going to put my foot down and have you guys take that.
Sure.
The details of the maintenance discussions offline, right?
Also.
You mentioned that Aquarian is doing PFAS testing of the water.
Yes.
Is that testing occurring in this area?
Yes, on all, all our systems, not in the distribution system, but in the water supply sources. And you can go to AquarianWater.com and all of the test results are on that website. AquarianWater.com, pick Connecticut, pick water quality and you can take a look at the latest. Remember all of the water sources for Granby Yard and Simsbury, so.
And what steps is the company taking to mitigate the PFAS when they do find excessive levels?
Sure, sure. We are planning to install treatment systems for the PFAS and, you know, it's basically granular activated carbon is kind of the system we'd use and we're, we're going to stay on top of it. I believe the Simsbury system is not in terrible shape when it comes to PFAS. But again, you can go online, you can see what the results are there as well. But we take it very seriously and now that the EPA maximum contamination levels, it's four parts per trillion have come out, and it just came out within like the last month. We suspected that that would be the level because that's what they hinted as their draft regulations came out and that's what they stuck with and we've been planning for that already.
Do you have a sense of what the timetable is for installing the systems?
We, we have to do within five years, so it'll be sometime in that timeframe. But again, the, the rule was just finalized a month ago. I suspect within a year, we'll have that schedule laid out because clearly we can't do it all at one time. We'll, we'll go to those systems that have more egregious problems in terms of meeting the maximum contamination level.
Thank you.
Just an interesting side note, which may be interesting only to me. So my daughter just graduated from UConn with a degree in environmental engineering and her senior project, her team had to design a filtration system for these chemicals for one of the towns, one of the towns in Granby or in Connecticut, I forget which town, but yeah. They had to, they looked at three potential different options. Near and dear to my heart, they recommended the cheapest one. Mark, go ahead.
Well, thanks for coming out and talking to us and I'm glad that we're talking about who's maintaining these hydrants because I know that at least one of them's broken. And if Aquarian is looking at the town to maintain them and the town didn't know that they were responsible because they thought Aquarian took care of that, that was a gap that I don't want to have there.
Yes, agreed.
Yep, agreed.
And I'd love to resolve that, you know, hopefully soon. Because it's a safety issue, obviously, for the community.
Is Chief, do you, I'm going to call it, Chief Orr?
He's on there.
Yeah, yeah. Chief, do you have, knowing my desire for you to take the details offline on the fire hydrant maintenance, do you have anything you want to add or ask tonight?
Nothing I need to ask. We've been working with Aquarian off and on like different projects over the years. Always a good experience, just so the town folk are aware of the Aquarian water system is basically from the Cleveland Bridge south, that's all the water system there is all the Aquarian. The original line came down, Ken Road for many, many years was where the first line came down. They've been making upgrades and we've been building infrastructure in that area. And as you pointed out, it was about 30 hydrants. The fire department uses the flush hydrants both in the Aquarian system and the Salmon Brook Water District system, which is the other system north of the bridge. We have not done that in probably 10, 15 years. There were some changes we were asked to make. And for me, Aquarian, we never really discussed it, but with Salmon Brook Water District, as far as we know, they're taking over making some hydrants and flushing, et cetera. So we have not done that in many, many years. So I'll gladly, you know, take the details offline and try to address the ongoing issues. I mean, as a rule, you know, Los Nicas Fire Department is really good at rural water supply. Hydrants are a blessing, no doubt. But we're, you know, majority of our town does not have hydrants. And, you know, the folks that are near hydrants, they're the ones that get the benefit. They get the ISO insurance rating improvements. So folks that are near those hydrants get an improvement in their insurance costs for those. That's it. No questions.
George, do your Pura rules allow you to pass the maintenance cost of the hydrants more directly to the particular users of the area or not?
Generally, no, but they're usually grandfathered in. And so, for example, we're not charging for the physical maintenance of the hydrants and again, Aquarian would be more than happy and willing to accept responsibility for maintaining the hydrants, but a couple of things would have to happen. One, we'd have to charge it $265 per, per hydrant times 30, it's not a huge number, I would imagine for the town. But two, we'd have to do something to transfer ownership of the physical hydrants over to Aquarian.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? If you haven't met Jack, this gray haired guy with the glasses, he's with the Salmon Brook Water.
Oh, that's, oh, Jack.
You guys probably need to get together too.
Sounds good.
All right. All right, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Very grateful, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is to receive a presentation from Kim Becker, who's the Chair of the Granby Education Foundation. Welcome, Kim.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me. I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Granby Education Foundation. I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Granby Education Foundation. Just so we're all on the same page, GEF is over 20 years old, and we were started by a group of citizens who were inspired by a former science teacher at, I believe, the middle school. And out of that inspiration came the Salmon Brook Ecology Center, which is over by the middle school and is integrally tied to the seventh and eighth grade, and now the sixth grade as well, curriculum, science curriculum. They have a solar system, they have a hydroponic system, they have a weather bug, and they also grow fish in conjunction with DEEP. So that was the start. That was a $350,000 project that was entirely run by volunteers and funded by citizens of this town. GEF grew out of that and continues to be volunteer-led as well as community-funded. We received no grants or any government funding whatsoever. We are very, very lucky that we have the amazing group of volunteers that has served us so well for over 20 years. We are equally thrilled and very happy that Mark Wetzel does our financial investments for our endowment fund. Without him, we would not be able to do the work that we do. We have provided seed money for innovative educational programs throughout our community, very often through the schools, but we are big proponents of lifelong learning. And this year, I think, really shows a lot of GEF's history as well as priority. We've awarded 10 grants this year. Seven are community grants, one is a special project, another was through our substantial arts endowment, as well as one mini grant. If any of you saw the spring musical Footloose at the high school, you were treated not only to fantastic singing, but also a very lovely microphone system that GEF funded to the tune of $16,000. The school was not going to be able to do that. BOE does not have that kind of money in its budget. So we were very proud to be able to work with the folks at the high school and with Sherry Burke, our new superintendent, to make that grant happen. We also are very interested in ensuring that lifelong learning and education is accessible for folks. And to that end, we gave grants for both a summer life skills camp for kids who are autistic, have ADHD, and other types of disabilities. So they are going to learn a lot of different skills that will then translate back into our community and into our schools. We also had a young man who I know pretty well, he's my kid, but he worked with the Granby Public Library to create memory care kits for people who are struggling with dementia and their caregivers in order to find connection, as well as help memories resurface. So, you know, just as a proud mom, I go over to the library, check it out, it's very cool. We also did a few other large grants this year. Juneteenth is going to be celebrated throughout the Farmington Valley, over in Simsbury, and Granby Racial Reconciliation will be spearheading that effort for Granby. And they decided, though, that they're a Granby organization, and they wanted to do something here. So they developed a new program called the Racial Unity Festival, which will be held on June 29th in Salmon Brook Park. So thank you to the Parks and Rec folks for helping them out with that. But we also gave them a substantial arts grant for music and the double Dutch demonstration, as well as the three-on-three basketball tournament. And we were very excited to do that. They've done a great job with Juneteenth, and so we look forward to interesting programs coming out of that as well. We also were lucky enough to partner again with CASIT, the New Creation Station. We did the sewing station. There will be demonstrations, there will be classes for all ages, and it really just brings people together in a really great way. So throughout our community, we really try to pull people together and ensure that access to opportunity is for everyone. And I would just like to say on a, again, personal note as a resident, one of the things that I think makes Granby really, really special is the number of groups of volunteers, whether it's friends at Holcomb Farm, friends at the public library, the Granby Land Trust, you know, GEF. We have amazing groups of people who put in incredible amount of time. And that is, I think that makes a healthy and vibrant community and gives us a lot of things that we wouldn't have otherwise due to tight budgets. So we are all very, very proud to be part of GEF and part of the fabric of this community. Do you have any questions?
Let's start again with Fred.
Thank you for coming out and explaining more about GEF. Sorry I couldn't be there, but it sounds like you guys are doing a great job, and thanks for the info.
Thank you.
No, great job. One question on the applications. Do you do like an annual kind of cycle for the grants, or do you do it on a rolling?
Actually, we, several years ago, we revamped our applications. One, we made them a little easier, because we get a lot of volunteers and a lot of teachers who don't have a lot of time. So we want to make sure that we are as welcoming as possible to all kinds of ideas. And I have to say, the teachers especially, bang-up job this year, just incredible, some of the things they've come up with. But we do now have a rolling application system, and, you know, and sometimes we have to, you know, depending on where things fall. For example, we actually provided the seed money for the Granby Brunt's Robotics Team back in the day. And they've been highly successful, and that's great, but they needed some extra money this year, simply because it's an expensive program to run. It's very difficult. Those kits are crazy. So, and I say that as a robotics mom. So we couldn't give them all of the funding when they asked for it, but so what we did is we kind of split it, because it came very late in the year. So if we get something in April or May, depending on the size of that grant, we may have to sort of split it fiscal year. But our fiscal year is during the summer, it's July 1st, so it didn't impact them.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, great, great job. Really, I'm grateful and proud of the work that you guys do in our community.
And by the way, you know, I did want to mention that we are so good that at our annual fundraiser, the Granby, Taylor Swift herself made a little appearance. So, which was very cool of her, and, and.
Let's talk about your challenges going forward. Do you see any particular challenges coming up for the next couple of years?
You know, I think a lot of the challenge comes in with maintaining a really passionate and active group of volunteers. I think that is always the number one challenge in any of these groups. But, you know, we've also managed to do it for over 20 years, so I think we're going to be okay. I, my, I think sometimes people do need to remember that we are seed money. We, we love what we do, but it is not operational. You know, that's not our job. Our job is to make sure that when somebody has that inspiration moment, they are supported and, and they have the money to start it off. And sometimes we do multi-year grants. You know, we have certainly had music series that have come back year after year, but the programs are different every time, so that makes some sense. The robotics team comes back every once in a while. That also makes some sense. But primarily, we really are about that innovative seed money, let's get that inspiration off the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Hats off to the organization. I entered two teams into the Granby, my wife, my two daughters and their, my son-in-laws. We broke off into two teams of three. We didn't even sniff the right answers in most cases, but we had a heck of a time. Looking forward to next year, we're going to approach it differently. Instead of participating, we're going to recruit people that are really, really smart. And then we, we had dinner at the barn after. So for us, we were welcomed in, we had a great time at the event, and then we partake in some dinner, which we're going to do next year, but we're going to have a different lineup of participants.
So we were talking afterwards, I don't know, we've had a team in it for probably the last 10 years, most of the last 10 years, and we're getting sick of never making the final round. So my idea for you guys was.
Okay.
You, you know, you get all the flight winners, but you reserve one spot and let a team buy its way into the final round.
Oh, we can watch it off the championship slot!
Yeah, buy your way into the final round, make a lot more money.
Oh, that might work. That just might work.
No questions, Kim. Just thank you for that information, it was very informative.
No questions for me. Thanks for the support you give to the Granby education system.
All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yep. All right, the next item on our agenda is consideration of a DOT MGP transportation grant. Sandy did us a pretty straightforward memo. It's a grant that helps fund our senior van service. Anybody have any questions? Does this require a motion?
Sandy is online, and she can tell us that.
Sandy, do you need us to take specific action tonight? All right. There are no objections, I think out of an abundance of caution.
She might be there.
Try again.
Can you hear us, Sandy?
She said no action needed.
Okay.
In the chat.
All right, well, does anybody have any questions for Sandy?
I noticed that the old senior van is still parked, I think, up by the DPW. Is there going to be use for that? Retired van?
I believe we're selling it.
Thank you.
We're doing the process. Okay, there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is consideration of general fund budget amendment for the library summer intern position. Again, pretty straightforward memo, got some grants to fund this position, or mostly fund it. This one does require a motion, because we have to amend our budget to reflect both the revenue and the expense, and because the program splits the fiscal years, the motion's fairly long.
Okay, I'll take it.
Thanks, Mike.
I move the Board of Selectmen approves a budget amendment to increase miscellaneous revenues line item by $2,384.64. Payroll temp part-time line item by $2,198,060, and FICA and Medicare line item by $164.04 in the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Adopted general fund budget for the four week of the library summer intern, and forward the request to the Board of Finance to approve. And I move that the Board of Selectmen approves a budget amendment to increase miscellaneous revenue line item by $3,135.36. Temp part-time line item by $2,883.30, and FICA and Medicare line item by $252.06 in the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Adopted general fund budget for the six weeks of the summer intern, and forward the request to the Board of Finance to approve.
I second the motion.
Any questions or comments? Anything you want to add, Mike?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the capital equipment loans. Again, pretty detailed memo. This one requires us to adopt a resolution. I have a quick question, but I think I know the answer, I'm just confirming it. So this is, this is typical of what we have done in the past, not the numbers.
You are correct.
But the process is what we typically do.
Yes, very briefly, when the board passes a capital plan, some of it is designated for lease financing. Kimmy goes out there, she samples the market. In this particular case, she looked at Liberty Westfield and TD Bank, TD Bank was low. I call this a refunding. We simply take the cash that has been expended to buy these capital items, buy the town, and the bank substitutes, pays us a check for the money we paid, and then turns it into a loan, essentially is what's happening. Kimmy is also online, if she has any additional comments, she certainly can add them in.
I was going to add that her, I spoke to you, my next chairman, Mike, and she changed my recommendations.
Anybody have any questions? So I think probably the appropriate motion is to approve the resolution as it's written in the backup. Scott's let us do that before, that could have.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as written in the backup.
Second the motion.
All right, any other further discussion?
Do we have to send this to the Board of Finance, or is this just something we can approve?
If it passes, we can approve it. The bank can.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, next item on our agenda is the adoption of the Granby Emergency Continency Plan for elections. Our registrars and Mr. Nolan prepared a plan, as I understand, it's relatively new requirement with the Secretary of State.
Very detailed plan, yep.
The full plan is in the backup. Anybody have any questions?
I had one. They reference most. I had one, they reference most of the job functions at the polling area, but not the assistant registrar. Does that fall under the same title as registrar?
Yeah, so in the absence of the registrar of voters, your deputies would step in, and then the assistant registrar of voters.
Okay.
Maggie, did you have any?
I didn't see anything in the plan, and maybe it's not required. In the event that there's some kind of catastrophe like this that delays or eliminates some of the hours of voting, is there a mechanism to add additional hours? I imagine that would be done through the Secretary of State's office, but.
It would, and, and the Secretary of State's office also has a number of emergency plans. I'd have to take a look to see what would specifically speak to that. There are a couple of different scenarios, obviously, as you guys know, as far as like referendums, where you get to add hours to voting. But as far as like on Election Day, a delay that would disrupt the election voting process, as far as extending that, the Secretary of State's office would have to be involved and would have to make a recommendation to do so.
Okay, but it's not required to be a part of this?
No, the only thing that the registrar of voters and I outlined in the plan were what we are required to address per state statute, which is just the items listed on, in the memo.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had that question as well, and then I just have a more general question. So as we go forward, if we think of things that we should add or may want to add, is there a provision here that just lets you guys add them, or does, do we have to go back and readapt?
So they'd have to be readapted. The statute reads that the legislative body has to go in and approve the emergency contingency plan. So if at any point in time we want to go ahead and take a second look at any of this, we can go and readapt a new plan. However, it's important to note, if you do not adopt a plan, the states, the Secretary of State's contingency plan becomes your plan per statute.
This one pretty, this one relatively kind of mirrors the Secretary of State's anyway, right?
Correct. With the exception of that this plan only addresses what we're required to by statute, the Secretary of State's plan covers a wide variety of scenarios, which our plan, actually, if you, at the end of our plan, we reference anything not covered specifically in our plan, we're going to defer to their plan.
Okay. Does the statute require us to look at it on the regular time frames?
It does not.
Okay. All right, Kelly?
Questions? Want a motion?
I, almost. Brad, did you have any questions?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, yes, I will accept a motion, Kelly.
All right, I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen hereby adopts the Granby Election Emergency Contingency Plan for all elections, primaries, referendums, early voting events, as required by law, and hereby directs the registrar of voters to file the Election Emergency Contingency Plan with the town clerk and the Office of Secretary of State.
Second.
Further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is the department reports, or actually, town manager reports, or Mr. Nolan.
Thank you. Dated May 1st, and the package attached to the agenda was the community report as of May 1st, so that would cover predominantly the month of April. I won't go through it in excruciating detail, it's four pages long for those folks who want to take a look at what the town's up to, and this is predominantly department heads. Just a couple of comments that I want to make for those watching. I attended a meeting and took a tour, compliments of Jenny Emery on the Holcomb Farm, that's a, again, a beautiful facility. Visited the community garden and met with community organizer Deborah Rowe. We're going to come in and do a little meeting a little bit later on our energy needs. Joined the first selectman, Mark and I went out to the McLean Healthcare Facility in Simsbury and discussed possible synergies. And we had a resident who had concerns on the location and the condition of the transfer station. So I met with Kirk, and we're going to work a little bit more on housekeeping, but the location is really determined by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. It was done under consent order a number of years ago, and even where the bins are placed is subject to state approval, so a little bit inflexible there, but again, we looked into it. Want a shout out to anybody who owns a dog. This comes from Scott Nolan or Tom Clerk. Each year, dog owners must license their dogs beginning June 1st through June 30th. So if you have a dog aged six months and older, please check the website, and just a reminder to secure your dog license. Want a shout out related to the police department, Officer Danny DJ McCauley has been promoted to the position of detective. Under projects, Chief Sansom and our captain, Laflamme, met with the state traffic safety personnel, and they accessed locations for traffic safety measures for Route 10 and the Route 20 intersection, as well as Route 20 speed and several crosswalks. Shout out to the library, Michelle Kaminsky, who's the children's and teens librarian, as well as Amber Weisek, Director of Library Services, are being awarded the Connecticut State Library Association's faith, I'm going to butcher this name unfortunately, Hectowen, award for outstanding children's library programming in honor of the Granby Children's Book Festival, which appeared in November of 2023, and that award was given at the annual CLA conference on Tuesday, April 30th. The FH Cossette Library is in full swing, patrons can visit the Cossette Creation Station Makerspace, an open house on April 20th had over 140 visitors. Shifting to Abbey, Community Development, Building Department received two permits for Building 5 and 6 at Station 280. We collected total permits of 203,936. Shout out to Human Services, rent rebates for elderly and disabled renters, that's the tax relief program, are being accepted now through October 1st, 2024. And finally, John Lambert Information Technology is working with the town to develop a list of 10-year capital needs for town technology. And those are two things that are on our to-do list. Number one is get a 10-year capital plan for the Board of Education and the town, to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, to start to think about our future needs, as well as reshuffle the ARPA deck, and we want to do that, if not at the next May meeting, the first meeting in June, so that we have an opportunity to respond to the federal need to obligate the fund. So those are two things that I want to put on your radar. Other than that, I will turn it back to you, Mr.
Brad, do you have any questions?
Nothing for me.
Kelly?
No, I just enjoyed the report you put together, because you could insight as to what's going on in the town, so thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have two questions. So on the dog license, I make no secret of the fact that my dog is dog licensed. It's a protest, it's a protest, because we make Scott and our town clerk do all of this work, and we lose money on it. But maybe this year I'll bring him down and get him licensed. But you said the website, can we do it online?
Yeah, there's information. Yeah. Hopefully, soon, you know, the next year or two, we'll be able to do some online dog renewals, so.
So if it's possible, Scott, we used to set aside dog license one for the police dog, but seeing there's not a police dog, I think license one appropriately should go to the first selectman's dog, especially if he's being renewed for the first time.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not, Hobbs will get whatever number he gets when he shows up there, period.
I'm looking forward to seeing him.
And then just on page three, under the RFP for freshens, Abbey notes that notice may be posted on the property. I think we should absolutely post notice on the property when we get ready to do that.
And a little bit of background for those who are wondering what we're doing is, we've already advertised for a broker and got nobody who solicited or responded to our solicitation to broker this. We had, I believe the number is seven people reach out, predominantly restaurateurs, who said, gee, if we knew. So we're going to direct to market, we'll see what we get, but we will absolutely post the notice on the site.
All right, any questions?
No questions.
Mark?
I just, I'd like to compliment the police officers who I saw parked outside the station on that one Saturday afternoon, collecting no longer to be used prescription drugs, but 135 pounds?
Yes.
That's a lot of aspirin.
Yes.
Anything else, Mark?
Nope, I was just amazed by the quantity.
All right. I don't have anything necessary to report, so Kelly?
I don't have anything.
Maggie?
So just before this meeting tonight, I went over to Salmon Brook Park for the Strings in the Park presentation, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our school music departments. They had string performers from Wells Road and the Middle School, and there was quite a crowd there, and I know they're doing Jazz in the Park with, I believe, all three schools, the jazz bands, on March 31st, so.
So was it at the band show there?
Yeah, yeah, and they, they were bringing up kids, you know, groups of three or four, and they're really talented kids, it's amazing.
Awesome.
So Jazz in the Park, March 31st.
All right, Mark?
Well, they're not here, but I'd like to thank our Board of Ed representatives, student representatives, who told us about the Empty Bowls fundraiser. I did attend, it was packed house, and the soup was very good, and now I have a extended collection of crockery in our house.
Let me warn you, because I used to go every year where it says, don't put them in the dishwasher, don't put them in the dishwasher. Substantially reduces the Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right. We're going to go, any?
About Fred?
Fred?
Oh, I'm sorry, Fred, yeah, I'm sorry. Fred, did you have anything? Let me start.
No, I know. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, guys.
That's all right, feel better.
Yeah, thank you for not sharing.
Thank you for staying home.
So before I go into the public session, because I'm sure Shirley doesn't have anything for us, Kimmy and Sandy, thank you very much for staying on tonight. Anybody here in the room have any public comment? Anybody on Zoom? All right, I don't believe we have any need for an executive session, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Is it moved?
Stop it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.